You want a five vote?
Quorum.
Five vote, five votes.
We are reconvening.
On an eighth member board.
Board members, if you could consider, please, Dr.
See what I'm saying?
Pugh's amendment. She has put this forward as a motion, I believe. She's offering it as a motion. Do we have a second for this?
Second.
Okay, we have a second from Ms. Tilly on the telephone. And Dr. Pugh, back to you for any discussion thereof.
Point of order.
Yes.
So, the motion is to basically swap it out?
So, you've got, so you've got, it's a question. And I think the clarification point needs to be asked of Dr. Pugh. Are you, are you suggesting a full substitution, number one? Or, number two, are you suggesting an addendum thereto, ala the amendments of Ms. Snyder and Mr. McMillan?
I guess I would move to strike from, I would move to, and we're only talking about the mask mandate resolution.
We are.
So, I would move to strike the language other than mask mandate resolution.
Okay. So, so you, you would, you would leave mask mandate resolution. Your, your proposed motion is to strike anti and to strike the entirety of what Mr. McMillan has and to substitute in instead
Right.
your, your piece. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That is the motion on the table. That is seconded by Ms. Tilly. Mr. McMillan, did that answer your question?
Yeah.
That did answer your question? Very good. Okay. Who wants to speak to this? It's your, it's your amendment. You have the right to speak to it first.
I think I've spoken.
Okay. Very good. Dr. Albridge.
So, I, I just want to second what Tiffany Tilly had said earlier, which is the State Board of Education does not have the authority to mandate anything or to mandate the opposite of anything. And so, I, I like the language that Dr. Pugh has put together. I would just recommend the last, therefore, be softened just a little bit to say that we are in support of local districts' ability to make informed decisions regarding whether or not they are mandating masks in their schools. I don't want it to come across like the State Board of Education is mandating that local school districts do this because we don't have the authority to make a mandate like that. We do have the authority, not so much authority, we have the ability to support our local school districts in tough decisions that they need to make. And so, that's, I had recommended a few word changes. And I think Dr. Pugh was kind of taking a look at those and maybe thinking of something of her own. Just to demonstrate that this is, this is a resolution in support of local districts, not a resolution mandating local school districts.
Yeah. So, what I'm trying to say is that we support school districts in their decision to mandate universal masking. And I don't know if that makes it any better. I don't want to soften it too much because I think that's one of the issues, is that there are so many that feel like the language is so soft. And, and so, I do want to tell them that we support them in their decision to mandate. So, the word "support" to me, we're not telling them to mandate. We're telling them that we support them in that.
So, here is what I suggested. And I'm open to, you know, now, therefore, be it resolved that the Michigan State Board of Education supports local school districts' ability to make informed decisions, including those related to mandates for universal masking on buses and indoors at all school facilities and events for students, teachers, staff, and all school visitors, regardless of vaccination status.
Okay, let me just see that.
Okay.
Supports local school districts. Okay, I could do "including"
Okay.
mandates. Take out those related to mandates.
Okay. All right.
Could you please read that again, if you would? I, I just want to make sure that when we finally vote on what we vote, we're, we're clear.
Okay. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Michigan State Board of Education supports local school districts' ability to make informed decisions
Yes.
including mandates for universal masking on buses, dot, dot, dot.
Marilyn, do you have that? Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Michigan State Board of Education supports local school districts' s- apostrophe, ability to make informed decisions.
May I add the word scientifically before informed? To make scientifically informed decisions.
Scientifically informed decisions, comma.
Including mandates for universal masking, dot, dot, dot.
Including mandates for universal masking on buses, to, a-
Take out the word "to," that's, that's not supposed to be there.
Yeah.
Including mandates for universal masking.
Including mandates for universal masking on buses
And indoors.
And indoors.
The rest is the same.
Okay. So, a, a question on this. There is a mandate to mask on buses. And it is a federal mandate, if I recall correctly. Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, this is largely moot with respect to buses. There, there will be mandates on the wearing of masks on buses across the country.
Right.
Irrespective of what we do or MDHS does or the state legislature does. Is that correct, Mr. Geron? Okay, all right. I just want to be clear.
Okay.
You, you're free to leave it in, but it adds nothing to it, simply because we have no control over it. I mean, even weighing in on it seems a little superfluous since, since it's at the federal level, unless you want to weigh in on that.
We can take it out, as long as it's going to be there.
So, now, therefore, be it resolved, Michigan State Board of Education supports local school districts' s- apostrophe, ability to make scientifically informed decisions, comma, including mandates for universal masking indoors
Okay.
at all school facilities and events for students, teachers, staff, and all school visitors, regardless of vaccination status. So, do I understand that this, that this does two things? One, it supports the right of local control, number one. And two, it supports, it supports the right of local control to mask.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Okay. All right.
Or not mask.
Or, or not mask. That's exactly right. No, I think that's exactly right. That's fair. So, so, your motion, supported by Ms. Tilly, with the friendly amendment from President Albridge, is as it is written, okay? It is unchanged in the whereas's. It is changed in the now, therefore, be it resolved, as we discussed. Marilyn has it written down. I have it written down. Ms. Snyder, to you.
I don't know if I would take out the school bus discussion. I don't support the amendment or the, I, I won't support it, but at the same time, I would like to encourage you all to think a little bit less restrictive in terms of like, the federal government has all say. I mean, there, there is the Tenth Amendment, and we have states' rights. So, if that's something you want to indicate in that last paragraph, it's probably worth-
It, it's fine. I mean, I, I, you know, it was, it was, it was your, your amendment. It was your friendly amendment to the amendment. I'm, I'm good with what you want to do.
We can keep it in there. The only reason why I would take it out is because the bus is in and indoors at.
All right.
So.
On buses and indoors is the way it's reading. We're striking "to." And that's the only word we strike down there. We add local school districts. Now, therefore, be it resolved, Michigan State Board of Education supports local school districts' s- apostrophe, ability to make scientifically informed decisions, including mandates for universal masking on buses and indoors at all school facilities and events. And there, there it goes to the end. Okay?
Discussion?
Additional discussion, yes. Okay? Please.
I would oppose this motion to substitute ours. I think it's clear that the CDC said that, you know, the flu is more problematic for children than COVID. We didn't require masking or allow districts to mask or support districts masking
Okay.
for the flu. And there is, and it's clearly harmful to children. So, I would not want to be supporting district, and the vaccine is available for anybody, the teachers or staff at schools and families at home. This is, it's unconscionable to, you know, support masking it for these little kids. And I just, I'll be opposing this amendment.
So, so if we could, if there's any other discussion, that's fine. Otherwise, we are voting on Dr. Pugh's amendment to the base resolution. That's the, that's the initial vote.
Right.
So, if we could have a roll call vote, Marilyn, please.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett, absent. Pugh?
Yes.
Snyder?
No.
Strayhorn?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Albridge?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now, the vote is on the resolution as amended. And it is functionally a revote, okay? Marilyn, if you could take that vote, please.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett, absent. Pugh?
Yes.
Snyder?
No.
Strayhorn?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Albridge?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. McMillan, to your second resolution, the anti-student vaccine mandate resolution.
Oh, yeah, this just simply, well, I can, I can read it. Anti-student vaccine mandate resolution, whereas none of the COVID-19 vaccines have actually been approved by the FDA. Whereas, according to the CDC, students under the age of 17 are much less likely to die from COVID-19 than from a car accident. Whereas, health-compromised family members and school staff who want a COVID-19 vaccine can easily obtain it. Therefore, be it resolved that the Michigan State Board of Education opposes discriminating against students, parentheses, including masking penalties, quarantines, and segregation based on vaccine status.
Okay. So, there is-
That's my, that's-
That's your resolution?
I move, I move it, you second.
Moved, it is seconded. We are at discussion. Would you like to discuss?
Well, I mean, it, it pretty much says it all. I mean, you know, certainly, it has been authorized, but everybody acknowledges it's not approved. I hear that they're going to bypass the, the standard requirement for any vaccine, that there's long-term trials because of politics. So, they're going to push this out and not, not actually do the science in the next month or two or three. I don't know. But, but at any rate, it's currently not approved. So, it is, in many ways, experimental. And we're not going to have long-term trials. And it would just be horrible to back, to think that this would be a mandate to vaccine students. And then, I just reiterate the, clearly, this relative risk is less of dying from COVID for kids in school than from dying in a car accident. And that there, the, the one thing that I kept, we kept hearing was that families and school staff might be compromised, and now, there's a vaccine for that. So, I just oppose discriminating against students. We're seeing and hearing that if their vaccine status, they, they got a quarantine in, in sports. And, you know, they're being pushed to the back of the bus. They're being, you know, just told that they are second-class citizens. And it's, it's an outrage what is, what is happening in our schools. And I hope that we would oppose this kind of discrimination against students.
So, thank you very much for sharing that. May I ask a question, a point of clarification on the title of the resolution? I, I read the resolved. I read the title. And the, the two don't seem in sync with one another. Is that nonetheless the, the title that you desire?
Yeah, I mean, it could be-
And I'm, I'm not sure what student vaccine mandate is.
Student vaccine discrimination resolution. I mean, I guess-
Okay, fair enough.
That, that would be my, yeah, change.
Okay.
Student vaccine discrimination resolution.
Okay. Anti-student vaccine discrimination resolution. And Ms. Snyder, do you accept the, I mean, it's his, it's his resolution, but you, you seconded it with other wording. Do you have any issues with that?
No.
Okay. All right. Very good. Other, just, thank you, Mr. McMillan. Other questions? Other thoughts? Dr. Pugh?
I'm opposed to the resolution, but I just wanted to speak to the fact that we've lost over 400 children. We've had 160 children. Forty-three percent of those children African-American. I think what we're at, about 18% African-American students, 18, 25% that have-
We're below 25%, yes.
Okay. That have multiple symptom, system inflammatory syndrome. And we've lost children here in Michigan. We need to do everything that we can to layer our approach to addressing and keeping, to, to getting rid of COVID, to stop COVID from killing parents, causing hospitalization in children. Praying for the 11 children that are in the hospital right now due to COVID. The vaccine itself is based on years and years of data and studies. I do believe that parents should be able to consult with their physicians and determine if there are any issues that are there. But because children are at risk, and we're seeing that with the variants that are spreading, and that we definitely need variants that are spreading and that are mutating as we speak. I, I could not support this at all, but just wanted to also correct some misinformation.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Other reflections?
Yes.
This is-
I'm, I'm sorry. Who, who's, who's on the line? Is that Ms. Tilly?
Tiffany Tilly, yes.
Okay. Ms. Tilly, let, we'll go-
I'll defer.
Oh, very good. Ms. Tilly, then Ms. Snyder.
Okay. Thank you. The point that Tom made earlier, and Dr. Pugh had spoke to it as well, about the, the amount of amount of children that die every, or not every year, but that die due to COVID, is less than car crashes. She spoke to what I was thinking when I heard it. You know, with, with the car crashes, we do use precautionary methods in the seat belts and the car seats. We have to use precautionary methods. But I, I cringe every time, Tom, you know, Board Member McMillan, every time you minimize how many children have died due to COVID. One child, losing one child is devastating to a family, to a school, to a community. It, it should not be minimized. With that being said, I am, I don't have the resolution in front of me. Can you reread it?
Mr. McMillan, would you like to do the honors?
Okay. Anti-student vaccine discrimination resolution, whereas none of the COVID-19 vaccines have actually been approved by the FDA. Whereas, according to the CDC, students under the age of 17 are much less likely to die from COVID-19 than from a car accident. Whereas, health-compromised family members and school staff who want a COVID-19 vaccine can easily obtain it. There, now, therefore, be it resolved that the Michigan State Board of Education opposes discriminating against students, parentheses, including masking penalties, quarantines, and segregation, close parentheses, based on vaccine status.
I think that there are maybe a small few things that I agree with in, in there. But the majority, even like I said, minimizing children that have died from COVID because it's a small group of children. We, we don't want to lose one child. We want to do everything that we can as human beings, not just elected officials, as human beings to, you know, mitigate loss. I think some of the, the punishment part of what you're saying, I don't think that children should be punished. But I do think that there should be protocols put in schools to make sure that they're safe. So, I, I don't know if there's anything that we can, you know, any way we can reword. Because like, like I said, it, I don't agree with most of it. I do agree with some of it, the punishment part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. So, I'm sorry, to Ms. Snyder.
So, Tiffany, I would echo that there shouldn't be punishment. And that will be an extension of the next resolution we discussed because there is quid pro quo punishment on the table right now in our public schools, in local districts. But we'll get to that. This is always a very difficult topic for me. And I'm going to try very hard not to cry. And I'm not sure I'll get through it without doing so. And I'm going to embrace the emotion around it because it's very real. When our government does not take its job seriously, when the FDA does not care about ethical, longitudinal, and rigorous studies, and then it uses it as a quid pro quo to be able to engage in society. It is very, very wrong. In Pam, in the past resolution we discussed, you are killing our children. Not only is that bizarre to me to be called out in that respect, but I have already sacrificed a great deal to an FDA that did not do the due diligence of approving a drug that I took while I was pregnant. I gave birth to a baby with a cleft lip and then one without an arm. And the research they should have done before they didn't do it proved that you are at a 30% increased risk of exactly what I went through. That clot could have not just traveled to his arm and cut his arm off. It could have traveled to his brain and his heart. And clots are one of the issues that some people are dealing with, with the vaccine. This is not a subject you take lightly. This is not something we tie in a quid pro quo. We don't do that. We have learned historically, we don't do that. Dr. Rice, you didn't include that in one of the things that we've considered in terms of injustices in our history. The Nuremberg Code post-World War II is precisely what would protect us from being at the table today and politicizing such a thing. I'll be honest with you, as much sacrifice as I'm willing to make for my country, I will be damned if I make this kind of sacrifice again. It is very important that the policy we write do no harm. And while this board does not have the authority to do mandates, we've talked about that. We consistently discuss issues that we don't have the authority to write policy or legislation. But our statements matter. They make a difference. And I guess all I would say is that I am sure as hell not going to make that sacrifice a second time. Because there are harms we have already experienced. You, you just don't tell people, you must do this or else. And I will leave it at that. That's the best I can do right now. It's just not okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you for sharing that. So, we have a resolution on the table. It has been lightly amended. Mandate has been stricken from the title. Discrimination has been added in instead. It has been seconded. There has been discussion. Is there any more discussion? Hearing, no additional-
One, one, one second. I'm sorry. I, I, I just want to reiterate, discussion is not the issue. One of the reasons I, I voted yes to have the resolutions put on the agenda wasn't necessarily because I agreed with them. It was so that we could have the discussion. And I think that, you know, I, I understand that you two are the minority. And there are things that you want to discuss. Sometimes it's how you go about it. It's not the opposing view. Opposing views, for me, are fine. Sometimes it's how, how you approach it, though. And even, you know, the emails that we got and the conversations that were had in public comment of telling us, you know, how to vote on the mandate, that part was not obviously made clear to people because that was a consistent message. And we, it's just not something that's in our authority. Thank you.
Right. So, is that, thank you, Ms. Tilly. So, if I could understand, just, just a point of clarification about the now, therefore, be it resolved, about the resolved. Do I read this resolve that if it were enacted by whatever authority, not the, the board? Board, board can approve this or not. It's an influence, as Ms. Snyder mentioned. It's not a, it's not an, you know, it's not a directive. But if this were a directive, you, you oppose quarantines of students. Is that what I, is that, is that, is that what this is?
Making it, this, this would say that what's happening now is they say, if you have the vaccine, student, and you're playing sports, and they, and everybody comes in contact with somebody that has COVID, the vaccinated kids, they get to play. The unvaccinated kids, you must quarantine. So, you don't get to play. So, that's, that's what I'm addressing with that.
I see. So, you don't, you don't, you don't-
Huh?
Any form of discrimination, sorry.
Right.
Any form. I mean, because it's been so, the moving parts, the chaos and the confusion. So, to say any form of discrimination.
Yeah. I mean, and then sending the kids home, you know, the vaccinated ones get to stay in school. The unvaccinated have to go home from class. Just that.
We do have, you know, we have vaccination, we, we have vaccine mandates in, in the state of Michigan now. You, you realize that? I just wanted to be clear.
Correct.
No, there's opt-outs.
There are opt-outs. But there, but there are nonetheless mandates with the, with the exceptions.
No, it's obviously not mandated if there's opt-outs.
There are rules. There are exceptions to the rules. That doesn't preclude the, the fact that there are rules nonetheless.
They're not mandates.
They are not inviolable, if that's the point.
Can we vote?
Please. Marilyn, if you were to roll call vote?
Lipton?
I, I had a question.
Please.
I put it in, in the chat.
Yes.
I just want to make sure I understand that the discrimination, the way you've worded it, you say discrimination against students, and then you've got in parentheses, including masking penalties, quarantines, and segregation. So, the, that, everything that's in the parentheses, that is to further clarify how you're defining discrimination. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, no.
Okay.
Was that your vote?
That's your vote?
Yeah, I, 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 I actually think that that is a, I mean, if that's how you're defining discrimination, then, then, uh, then, um, then, then my vote is no.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
Is there a way, would you have interest? Okay.
Okay. McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett, absent. Pugh?
No.
Snyder?
Yes.
Strayhorn, absent. Tilly?
No.
Albridge?
No.
Motion fails. Two, four, two.
Two, four.
Okay. The third, the third resolution that was placed on the agenda at the beginning of the, the meeting. Mr. McMillan, to you.
I'll defer to Ms. Snyder. This is, she imposed this.
Right. So, I will read it aloud. Resolution to end the requirement of medical testing by schools and in schools. Whereas, school-based mandated testing is widely unsupported as an evidence-based practice or as an effective practice in the history of infection control. Whereas, unconstitutional force quarantine is being used as a quid pro quo for vaccination status through unconstitutional mandatory testing in Michigan's public schools. Whereas, a significant portion of Michigan parents assert they are the primary advocate and medical decision-maker of their children and are unsupportive of school-based medical testing and treatment. The State Board of Education does not support schools serving as a qualified assessor of or physical location where medical, psychological, or spiritual care, treatment, and testing included, is carried out beyond referral. We urge MDHHS and all public schools to stop COVID testing and return-
We urge MDHHS and all public schools to stop COVID testing and return whole health policy related to medical assessment and treatment to the individual.
Thank you. So we have a, a motion. We have support. Would you like to speak too?
I would. So, um, one of the biggest issues is that we have local districts who are suggesting that any athlete exposed to someone who tests positive for COVID, and by the way, it's not defined whether they're symptomatic or asymptomatic, has to quarantine for 10 days if they're unvaccinated. But the vaccinated don't. And this is again, whether or not they ever are positive or they're symptomatic or not, when all we heard all year long was something the opposite of that, right? So if we were consistent with what we've done this last year, students who are symptomatic, vaccinated or not, should stay home, get tested, and follow M.D. orders. Exposed students, whether vaccinated or not, should do the same if they become symptomatic. And exposed students, whether vaccinated or not, should either quarantine together or not at all when they're asymptomatic. So we really, this is the crux of the discrimination that we're seeing with vaccination. And this is, this is the quid pro quo that's baked into vaccination right now. So among many other things, but specific to schools and testing. It's a big deal that, that we're, we're weeding those two out and that any local school district is welcome to do that. And then the last thing I would say is by continuing down that path, we're really ignoring the concept of what these students went through when they were quarantined and went through isolation throughout the whole year. So this repeated testing, this repeated, you know, pattern of how we deal with, with exposure, you know, students who've been exposed as opposed to students that are positive and symptomatic, it's kind of a promise of the same behavior that put them at risk mentally and emotionally last year. So I just don't, I really think that MDE and the State Board of Ed could truly communicate to people that, you know, this is, if, if, if you're going to have a policy at the local level where if you're exposed, it's like the whole team should either quarantine, which obviously don't necessarily support that either, but it shouldn't be discriminated according to vaccinated versus unvaccinated.
Right, so, so, okay, very good. Thank you. That, I think that's, it's clear from my vantage point. Other, other questions or comments? From, from the, um, from those whom I can't see but I can hear, Ms. Tilly, Ms. Lipton, Dr. Pritchett, Mr. Strayhorn, any questions or comments? Hearing none?
None from me.
Okay. Hearing, hearing none, then, then we're to the table that I can see. Any questions or comments? Dr. Pugh?
I'm ready to vote, but I'll just say, you know, for the, for the point of, of accurate information, it's very important that we do testing and that we quarantine and that we do contact tracing. It's one of the only defenses that we have, or one of the best defenses we have.
I would just add to that. I think what we're seeing right now with, especially with the Delta variant, is there is a huge difference in what happens to those who are vaccinated versus unvaccinated. And I don't think that we should be telling schools that you can't take precautions when you know someone's unvaccinated knowing that the risk can be substantially higher for them. So I, I would, I would just be opposed to this. I, I also think the language raises unintended consequences regarding schools that have health-based facilities and things like that that I personally would not be opposed to. I think those are very vital things for communities that don't have access to healthcare. So I would be opposed to this.
Okay, all right. Any other questions or comments associated with this resolution? Hearing and seeing none. Marilyn, if you could do a roll, roll call vote, please.
Lipton?
No.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett, absent. Pugh?
No.
Snyder?
Yes.
Strayhorn, absent. Tilly?
No.
Albrecht?
No.
Motion fails. Two, four, two.
Okay, thank you very much. I believe that is all of the resolutions today. Unless I have miscounted in some way, shape, or form. Were there comments by State Board of Education members? The State Board members have any additional comments to make?
I just have to reply to what Dr. Rice said, that there's no CRT being, uh, being taught or that that agenda is not before us. I made it very clear in June, despite the bumbling effort of the Chairman of the Michigan Blueprint Committee, that, uh, who he never, he never answered, that in his high-leverage actions on page 14 of 40, that the Governor has approved, click on, including racial trauma, and you go to a document that talks about, you know, that we are in a white, living, living under a white, system of white supremacy. The results of living within a racist system or experiencing events of racism. So, you know, clearly billions of dollars or portions of it could be going to schools that are going to be teaching this stuff. And this is certainly the, within the definition of CRT. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Ms. Snyder?
I would just say that I certainly do not have the energy to take that topic on today. There are, above and beyond that, there are racial equity toolkits that D E I initiative committees are using that we'll be addressing over the coming months. And I just want to say, you know, there's a real consequence for our, our actions in the last year. There's a real consequence for, um, dictate, dictatorial behavior, and it's coming.
All right, thank you very much. Other comments from board members? President Albrecht?
Yes, thank you. I just want to say, I, this was the first meeting where we had the ability for folks to participate digitally, and I, I like that. I think that's a positive step forward for us. I would say that we need to figure out a way to either comply with our bylaws and, and have a way for people to be able to register ahead of time so that we know, we can plan on public comment timing. Or we need to change the bylaws to conform with what we, direction we want to go. One of those things we'll have to address relatively soon.
Okay, thank you, President Albrecht. Ms. Tilly?
Yes, um, the frustration that you two feel as minorities on the board is the frustration that minorities in this country have felt a thousand times over for hundreds of years, and we still feel today. Our voice keeps getting minimized. And even as we try to bring myself and other African-Americans, Dr. Pugh, you know, um, who is another African-American woman on this board, as we try to bring issues to you guys, to this board, to MDE, um, you, you guys try to minimize them. And, and some of the comments that were made earlier during public comment, if you're teaching facts about, about American history in, in class, you have to teach both sides of it. African-American history, Native Americans, Mexicans, there's, there's a lot of turmoil that happened in this country for minorities, and it continues to happen. There is still disparities and equality. And we need to teach our children that we are all equal. You know, I, I remember when we were having a social studies discussion and, you know, there was a big outrage from Christians. Well, we are all made equal under God. And that's what we need our children to understand. We're not trying to teach white children that they are the oppressors. We're trying to teach them to be sensitive to others. That, that we're all unique. We all have differences. I don't even believe in being colorblind, because when you're colorblind, you're not acknowledging the differences. We want to acknowledge that there are other different, there, there are other races, there are other cultures, there are people that don't look like us and that don't, they don't practice the religion that we, we practice. We want to, we want color acceptance, and that's what we want our children to learn. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms., Ms. Tilly. Anyone else on the phone? Ms. Lipton?
I thought Superintendent, uh, State Superintendent Rice's remarks were incredibly powerful, incredibly enlightening, and I think that, um, and I'm very proud that, although it was before I was on the board, you all included one of your, um, planks of your strategic plan to, to teach students and recognize, um, with a lens toward diversity, equity, and inclusion. And so I would, uh, would, uh, hope that this board continues to support its, uh, its plank, all its planks, quite frankly, but particularly that plank in the top 10 strategic plan that, um, uh, was passed before I got on this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Mr. Strayhorn, any comments? Okay, uh, hearing, hearing none. Dr. Pritchett, any comments?
Uh, yes, um, one is totally procedural. Um, I am the representative for NASB. Their annual meeting is being held October 8th. It's being held virtually. However, as a state board body, we need to, um, review not only some minor changes in their bylaws, but also some new, um, position statements that I have been part of or was a subcommittee on, um, over the past six, seven months. Just wanted to let board members know that I will be sending that document to you via email. It's my understanding that will be on the board agenda next month. If you have feedback prior to that, though, it would be helpful if you let me know via email so we can address it and be ready to address it in case I need to do some research, um, because that was only part of some of the changes that were made. And then we'll have to, I believe Marilyn's there, so she'll correct me if I'm wrong, uh, take action on it. And then, um, because the meeting in October, October board meeting. So that's my procedural part. I want to echo Ellen's comments. I certainly commend Dr. Rice and his comments today during the Superintendent's report. I thought that he wove in, um, the changes that continue to happen in this country after the, um, writing of the Constitution, which was in itself a document that was always intended to, um, be, um, moved with the country as it moved forward. So, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Anything more for anyone at the physical table?
I'll just ditto what was said. I appreciate your remarks and your, uh, comments, very provoking, um, and thoughtful and, um, just appreciate them. And to Mickey, thank you for your testimony and your thoughts. I, I don't want that to, to go unnoticed. I think that we all bring different experiences to the table that, that, um, lead us to have different thoughts on issues and, um, but I didn't want that to go on, you to think that that fell on deaf ears. I did hear you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Pritchett, Dr., Dr. Pugh. At 6:00, it's hard to tell one doctor from another. Future meetings are December, Tuesday, September 14th, Tuesday, October 12th, Tuesday, November 9th, Tuesday, December 14th, all regular meetings, all 9:30 a.m., all here unless you hear differently. We are adjourned at 6:02 p.m. Thank you, everyone.